Why?
Yeah, no, we were.
I think you get canceled.
Good evening. This is the call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council Work Session for Monday, September 15th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amos.
Present.
Ms. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Present.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening, we have Mayor Steger, City Administrator Matt Peoples, Development Director Lucas Hare, Finance Director Amanda Jackson, Construction Services Director Bill Sims, and Law Director Thad Boggs. The first item of business is the reports of city staff. Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Ms. Amos. So, thank you, sorry. Winchester Boulevard work is continuing. So if you've been through there recently, we have the, all the curbs in at the roundabout and everything but the surface on the asphalt in the roundabout itself. There's still a fair amount of work to do in there before it can be opened to traffic. So they're working on the brick pavers for the truck apron and median islands. We've got a lot of sidewalk to do along the back of the curves. We need the road as work area. So, but, you know, we had 90 days scheduled for that closure. We're coming up on about 45 at this point, so things are moving along well. So we're, once we get as much done in that area before we put a lane of traffic on it, you know, we're probably looking at maybe, maybe two weeks. And then we'll start looking at the next phase, which will be, maybe to build the median, continue that east up to the Prentice School intersection. So we're looking at adjusting the phasing to try to create as much workroom as possible. So I think the next phase, what you'll see is the westbound traffic heading back toward the warehouses will utilize the new roundabout heading west. And the eastbound traffic coming from that direction will stay on the temporary pavement. So we'll have traffic on the outsides of the work area, basically, at Prentice School. So that'll be coming. And, you know, we have streetlight working, work starting again this week. And we have some waterline work being done this week as well out there. So there's a fair amount of activity leading up to trying to get that at least partially open for the next phase. Street program, we do have a couple punch list items on that still with some, a couple signs and some manhole adjustments to do. And then the other active job really is Green Gate Boulevard. So last Friday, we did cement stabilization of the subgrades or the underlying dirt to build the road on. So Wednesday, we'll, we'll start hauling in some stone to start covering up the stabilized subgrade. So that, that job is progressing ahead of our schedule. So the contractor's really trying to get that as much wrapped up this year. Hopefully, everything except for the street lighting will happen this construction season. So that's moving right along. And we opened bids on the East Waterloo Street storm sewer. And the award for that is in the agenda tonight. And we are getting ready to advertise McGill Phase 2B project next, next Wednesday, or I'm sorry, this Wednesday. It'll be the first advertisement. So, you know, we're hoping this year to get the earthwork completed and, you know, probably get a good jump on the parking lots. So whether we get asphalt fault in them probably is dependent on weather conditions or to see, you know, how quickly that can be done. And then we'll have a fair amount of work to do in the spring, but we need to be wrapped up by June. So that's, that's the track for that project. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sims? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sims. The next item is request for council action. The first item is Resolution 25-048. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to authorize the mayor and/or city administrator to accept an easement from Lynch Investment Properties LLC.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Ms. Amos. This one, the, the next resolution for easement is, are both connected to the East Waterloo Street project that Mr. Sims referenced. The one at Lynch Investments at 68 East Waterloo Street is for a drain to go between the yards to capture back where the existing tile goes through.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Peoples on Resolution 25-048? If it's okay, also on 049? Okay, is there a motion to move Resolution 25-048 to full council? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Amos, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Thank you. And that next item is Resolution 25-049. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to authorize the mayor and/or city administrator to accept an easement from Trevcor Development, LTD.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Peoples?
Trevcor is the Emma's Meadow property over there. The easement is right alongside the, of Long Alley.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to move Resolution 25-049 to full council?
So moved, second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 25-023. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Danberg Incorporated for the construction of the East Waterloo Street storm sewer replacement project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Ms. Amos. So we had bids open on this project on September 5th. We had a lot of interest in it during the bidding phase. We had six bids submitted for the project, I'm sorry, five bids submitted for the project. And I think as you can see, there was a fairly decent range in bids. So we did sit down, of course, and, you know, evaluate the submitted bids and compared them to our engineer's estimate and to each other. And, you know, like both EMH and T and myself, I mean, we actually looked at them independently and then compared notes. But, you know, we were satisfied that, you know, the bid is, you know, correct. You know, interestingly, once you start to look at each of the varying items across the board, it's really the addition of quite a number of different things. So they're not drastically different, really. It's just kind of spread out. And, you know, a couple of the items I saw that had some of the bigger numbers on them had no concerns on those. They're using a regular paving contractor that we use for all the paving work. So I really trust that their numbers are very accurate. You know, we had a big difference in the large diameter storm manholes dollar wise, but we have a fair number of them. So the actual individual cost wasn't really that high. It just really added up because of the number of manholes we had. So it is my recommendation in EMH and T's as well to move forward with this project with Danberg Incorporated. Danberg is not contracted directly with the city that I'm aware of. Certainly, it's been at least 25 years that they had. However, I've, I've worked with them, you know, prior to my time here on several projects in other communities very successfully. So they're, they're a well qualified sizable contractor.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Any questions for Mr. Sims?
Mr. Shea.
The disparity of quotes is kind of almost shocking, but I'm glad you feel that Danberg's good and qualified. That's a huge swing between some of these.
Yeah.
Is there something that the guys at the bottom know about that, that the other guy doesn't? Or is it a "we don't need the work" kind of quote?
Well, I mean, there is some disparity. I will say that contractor at the very high end has bid on our projects in the past and they typically are always at the high end. So, you know, that isn't surprising that, you know, that's a pretty significant number, especially compared even to our engineer's estimate, which we kind of, you know, EMH and T's estimate was pretty much in the middle of that, which was probably a pretty good place to be, you know, based on their estimating. Generally, we don't like to see the engineer being the lowest of the, of the estimated costs on that. But we did have some, some new contractors in there that we don't have any familiarity with. They were in the lower half of this. So I can't speak to, you know, really, you know, their preparedness for it. You know, obviously, Strausler Paving does a fair amount of work here. I see their number. I will also say that they do, they are doing a lot of work now, not just in our community, but many central Ohio communities. So it may not have been, you know, potentially as competitive as they could be on that project. So, you know, as I said, I think, you know, looking at the numbers and comparing across the board, you know, quite frankly, Danberg, it's not that they had the lowest number on everything. They don't. That's all spread out. They just have a really good combination of numbers that worked out well for them. So I, I think we're the beneficiary of, you know, the competition that we're seeing right now. So I think we're in good shape on that.
It's kind of a nice change from a little bit ago, right?
Uh, yeah, certainly has been, yeah. You know, we've had a few years here where we're, you know, getting one or two bids on, on projects, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Mr. Sims?
Mr. Sims, I apologize. What did you say was the timeframe on this?
So we are going to try and complete the storm sewer and get temporary pavement down, at least temporary, permanent if the weather allows by Christmas time, end of year. So, you know, getting the pipe in the ground is first and foremost to get the storm sewer replaced. We'd like to roll into the pavement replacement. We'll just have to wait and see at this point. You know, even with the award tonight, the concrete structures are a long lead time item, so we're probably not going to see a contractor in town until at the soonest, November 1st. So, you know, it's probably about 30 days of storm sewer work. That's the plan, so we'll just see. We do have contingency quantities set up to do temporary asphalt to get us through the winter if need be to finish in the spring. So we, we had to allow time for that because we just couldn't, you know, be completely confident. We wouldn't, wouldn't be able to get the pavement in this year, so.
And the pavement is predominantly in the alley.
So in, in a portion of the alley, and then it comes, it comes out to Waterloo Street. And so from the, where Chloe Spa is now, from there to Tryin Street will be in the roadway on East Waterloo.
Okay.
So we'll be smack dab in the, almost the middle of the road, actually. So, you know, traffic will be controlled with flaggers, probably, you know, two-way traffic in one lane, you know, being alternated for most of that time.
Last question, and then I'll be done. I apologize. The field that goes behind there, is any of that going to be disturbed or any of that dirt moved around again?
So, no, we, we won't be, we'll be working a little bit into that property. As Mr. Peoples has that, an easement with Trevcor on that. So we're kind of just working along the edge of the alley with that property. We won't be disturbing anything out there. We have a limited easement, and we'll just be putting things back the way they are now.
So this won't disturb the drainage tiles that Mr. Peoples can, like, literally pinpoint in the middle of that field?
So there is a, part of the sewer we're replacing, basically, north of where we're tying in runs through that field. And so that will remain, you know, in its current condition. You know, my expectation is if there's doubt development, you know, of that field of some type, you know, the storm sewer would be addressed at that time, possibly rerouted around it or replaced.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Sims. Is there a motion to move Ordinance 25-023 to full council?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shea. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to old and new business. The pool conversation regarding residency and rates. I understand that there is some conversation towards resolution happening. So unless someone has something to add this evening, we'll keep moving.
I was just going to share real quick. We had had numerous conversations, and one of the things that came up was just talking to some other pools. So I just want to, this is just a share, no action needed on it. But we talked to a couple different pools, but the one from Grove City I thought was interesting, and as you guys have internal conversations, maybe some things to consider. So they have early pool hours, and they are considering doing a last hour pool where it's just members only. So the first two hours of the pool are just residents that have memberships, and then they're looking at the last hour potentially. They also limit the number of outside passes that they do. They, so they, you know, they realize that this limits the number of potential, like, outside customers. But they said when they did that, that they did see an increase in the number of memberships because people wanted the option. The members could get pool passes every day, but external, they limited. And they did say that the pool manager had the option to reduce the number for the day if they saw things getting out of hand or a little crazy, that they could take it down. One year, they said it was at 30, 30 external. Now, the pool manager did say that he likes it when it's busy. So he looks like at, on any given day, they have about 700 people using their pool. So, but that was like the general conversation. And then they use a software, a CityRes software for their pool management. They struggle with the day passes and, and being able to, the one thing he shared was that they don't know who their day passes are. So when somebody like, if Mr. Bennett comes and gets a day pass, they have no information about him, no idea who he is. And they said, you know, they do get some people who aren't being completely honest about that or who they are. So that is the one thing that they are looking to change for next year. So I just thought it was a good conversation, insightful thoughts, and maybe some things that we can consider. That was all.
Thank you, Mrs. Amos. Okay. The next item of old business is panhandling. And I believe we talked, the genesis of our conversation at our last council meeting was around panhandling continues in Canal Winchester. And Mr. Boggs reminded us that unless they are creating a safety hazard or they are not using public space, that it's a free speech opportunity. We did talk at our last meeting about the potential of posting signs around fines. So I don't know, Mr. Peoples, have you discussed that any further? Posting signs below the Better Way sign that says, you know, the fine for littering? Because I think that was what brought this up again. The fine for littering was X. So that's.
Actually, something else brought it up today. I mean, I, I had a resident reach out to me. That's why I asked us to add it to it. They're one of my old neighbors over in Ashbrook. And they were wondering what they can do to clean that up because they realized people are downed out, and there are people give money and food, but they don't like the trash that they leave behind. They're concerned about the image. They're concerned about other things. And so just, you know, that's why I asked to bring it back up because it seems like we did do those signs with some of the private ownership areas, and it seems to have really cleaned it up from at least what I've heard. I, you know, I don't know if anybody else has experienced that. But also wanted to see, you know, if there were other ways that we could do it because, like, when I drove to, I was going downtown on Saturday night at 10 after 5:00, there was a guy on that right of way that we had talked about at the last meeting. I called the sheriff and asked him to send somebody out. But you said you saw one at noon that day. It is, and it, so my concern is twofold. One, is somebody's going to get hurt, right? And people are not very patient out there and the island out there. So if there's any ways that we can do this, the littering, something, because the residents are noticing and they're bringing it to different people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Okay, anything else on that topic? Okay. Any new business that anyone would like to add? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Point order. No, never mind, sorry. We're dropped.
Thank you. Any new business or there was none mentioned? So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mrs. Amos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes. Thank you. Timeout, 6:20. That might be a record. Council will begin at 7:00 PM.
Did we go for ice cream now?
I was going, I was. I was going, I was-
Good evening, everyone. This is a call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council meeting for September 15th, 2025. Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be the chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Amos.
Present.
Ms. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is minutes 25-235.
Zero three five.
Zero three five. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 2nd City Council work session?
Still moved.
Second. Motion made by Ms. McLaughlin, second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have minutes 25-036. This is the September 2nd, 2025 full city council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve these as well?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Busker. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes, thank you. That'll bring us to communications and petitions. First item this evening is a proclamation from the mayor on Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We have the Fellows family here tonight. Did I pronounce that correctly? They came from Hilliard. We've got Andrew, the father, over here. Elena and Sienna, right? Elena.
Yes.
Okay. And again, they're here from Hilliard. What I understand is that Sienna is six years cancer-free. She's 12 years. She is 12 years old, so I assume at age six, they had cancer-free.
Yeah. Our first note of our petition, she was, it was 2019, so she was about six.
So, and they've expressed to me that they want to really make people aware of childhood cancer, and it meant a lot to them that we're doing this tonight. They came all the way across town from Hilliard, so we're very happy to have you. And I'm going to go ahead and read. I read the proclamation in abbreviated form last time, but since they're here, I will read the proclamation, and then you guys can be on your way. So, "Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas in the United States, one in 285 children will be diagnosed with cancer by their 20th birthday, with approximately 46 children per day, or 16,790 children per year receiving a diagnosis of cancer. And whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old, and 80% of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late with metastatic disease. And whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with one-quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas approximately one-half of childhood cancer families rate the associated financial burden due to out-of-pocket expenses as considerable to severe. And whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at local and national level are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now therefore, I, Joseph Steger, the mayor of Canal Winchester, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I urge all of our residents to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across the country. In witness whereev, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Canal Winchester, Ohio, to be affixed the second day of September, it's two weeks ago, in the year of our Lord 2025." Thank you for coming, guys. We really appreciate it. Best of luck to you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
She's like, get me out of here.
Ice cream's just around the corner. Well, next items on our agenda. Thank you, Mayor, for the, again, rereading the proclamation, and thank you to the Fellows family for being here this evening. Next items on our agenda are Madison Township Police Statistics from August 2025, and the Madison Township Fire Statistics from August 2025. I also recognize that Chief Boyd is with us this evening. Chief, anything to add, or anything you'd like to make us aware of this evening? We always appreciate your presence, for sure.
Appreciate it, Boyd.
Just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity if there was anything you needed to share.
Thank you. The one thing I do have to share is Chief Derek Robinson wanted me to share this with everybody tonight. On October 5th, at 181's Firehouse, that's up off of Southampton Road across from the high school, they are having their annual open house fire prevention. That address is 4567 Firehouse Lane, and the focus of this year's open house is lithium batteries. Disposing of them properly, they are, you know, a big fire hazard when they're sealed up tight like that, so it's going to be a proper disposing of them, all right? But again, that's what Chief Derek Robinson wanted me to pass on. Other than that, that's what I have for township news.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too. Stay safe, sir. Last item under communications is a letter from the liquor control.
I have a question about that. I am not a liquor permit expert, but maybe Mr. Harris...
I have a question about that. I am not a liquor permit expert, but maybe Mr. Harris, what is that one telling us?
A D1 permit allows for on-premise consumption of beer.
And are we allowed to have an objection to that?
I believe that we can request a hearing, correct?
That's, that's right. So, if council, if council does wish to object, then by motion, a hearing could be requested that would occur in front of a hearing officer of the Division of Liquor Control.
Do we even understand why they want to have open consumption on property?
No. No.
Is this the Fairfield Sheet or the Franklin Sheets?
This is Franklin. The other one's in Pickerington.
Oh, okay.
This is the general story.
Does that include only within the interior of the brick-and-mortar, or like, can somebody walk around in the parking lot with an open beer?
It doesn't include, it doesn't say patio. Typically, they'll say a patio on there. And this would be, this would have to be in a fenced or contained patio. And they don't have that currently on their site. So I would say it's for interior only.
If they were to add a fenced patio, would that have to go back through a development plan amendment process?
It would.
Is this typical for Sheets to have onsite consumption? I'm not familiar with their model.
I've only been in a few locations, so I couldn't tell you if it's typical or not.
Sarge, do you guys get a lot of calls over there?
Yeah.
What are your calls related to mainly?
Mainly thefts, theft of alcohol, get a handful of stolen cars. People leave them running and go inside. We do, we're there quite a bit.
A D1 is for beer only for on-premise consumption, or in original sealed containers for carryout until 1:00 AM. I believe they already have a C license, which would allow a carryout.
So they're trying to extend hours, or are they trying to spell beer to drink?
Is it?
I don't know. I wouldn't hear plans with us on it, so I don't know.
Is it appropriate to ask them to come briefly and answer some questions, and then if we see the need for a public hearing, we can schedule that?
Well, I mean, yes, you, you could, either to have them come at your next regular meeting, which would be October 6th, and that would be before the deadline in this to respond to the Division of Liquor Control, or to just collect that information and have it be shared with council in the meantime, before October 6th. There are only, there are a handful of statutory bases on which an objection to the issuance may be sustained. Those include conviction for a crime relating to the ability to operate the liquor establishment by the applicant, or any manager of the applicant, which we don't have a basis to believe that's the case. An applicant's unfavorable enforcement record, so if they were selling underage or something like that and had a record of doing so. Saturation in the neighborhood such that the permit applied for would be detrimental to and substantially interfere with the moral, safety, or welfare of the public, or that the location of the establishment substantially and adversely interferes with public decency, sobriety, peace, or good order of the neighborhood, or the normal orderly conduct of a public institution. So, you know, those are the bases on which if you requested a hearing, the hearing officer would be looking to see if the city could, you know, marshal evidence sustaining that objection.
It appears that they did receive a D1 permit in Granby Heights, and from reading the minutes, it, it looks like it's, they do not intend to have on-premise consumption in that location, and it was to allow for the sale of malt-based drinks, because those are not included in the C license, apparently?
Oh, hmm. That makes more sense.
But like I said, that's for that location. I'm not sure that that applies here, but at least it's another local example where they did receive a D1 permit.
So to Ms. Amos' point, are we able to reach out to them and just confirm that's the intention here? Who would take, would that be you, Mr. Harris?
I can attempt to, yeah. If there's contact confirmation on the permit, I'll get that off of there.
Thank you.
And Mr. Boggs, the standard for objection, like, it sounded like nuisance crime kind of stuff, and is there any way you can get with Sarge to figure out if they're meeting the criteria for that? Because there's a lot of stuff that happens over there, that there's a lot of stuff that happens over there. It's right on the city line. You got Columbus right there.
Yeah, we can have that conversation.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If we're good on this topic, we will move to public comment. If there's anyone that would like to share a comment this evening, just please step to the microphone, share your name. I missed that. I'm reminding that you have three minutes, according to this timer.
My name's Adam Karshner. I am a resident. I just wanted to, I don't know what was said in the previous meeting, but as far as when it comes to the pool, I would love to see that we go to resident-only, figure out a way to allow guests for residents for memberships and day passes. I know other cities have had a digital ID of sorts. I know that could be an option. And then also, there was, oh, the rentals for different locations in the city. I don't like seeing that drastically reducing the availabilities of rentals. I understand the reason behind it. Didn't know, I see right now it's broken up into...
Two half-days? Is that right?
I didn't know if there's a way to break that. I think that covers 12 hours or whatever. Break it up into three, possibly four-hour stints or something like that. But I know a lot of people like to use those, and if people get shut out of them, a lot of people probably won't be happy. That's all I have.
Thank you. We'll move to reports for city and staff. We'll begin with the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. The mayor's report is in your packet. It's not much different than previous ones. Speeding tickets are down for the whole month. I think there were only seven in there. I'm not sure about that, but I'll let you speak on that. Yeah, it looks pretty typical, so it's in there for you guys to look over. On a darker note, last, last week, we did have, unfortunately, in this country, another political murder, and I know back in June, we lost two legislators, state legislators in the state of Minnesota. It was Melissa Hortman and her husband, Mark Hortman. I would like to just take a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk and his family. He is not an elected official, but he is a political figure, and a lot of people in the country look up to him. So we'd just like to take one moment to honor him and have a moment of silence for him, if we could. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I have no further report.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the mayor's 2025, August 2025 court report?
Second. Still moved.
Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Moore to approve the August 2025 mayor's court report. Any discussion on the court report? Bearing none, roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to city administrator report, Mr. Peoples. And Mr. Peoples, I don't know if you have any response to Mr. Karshner about maybe any comment on the rental blocks, or I know you're working to find resolution on potential changes for the pool next year.
Yeah, we, we did look at the, some additional time blocks. The, the amount of staff time was the factor that we put, that led us to this, two blocks.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Adriana looked at the times that it's mostly been reserved, and also tried to make the blocks around what she was seeing as far as the most reservation times used.
This, this is on for a second read.
Yeah.
It was in his report.
I just want to add one thing to my written report. Street crews went over and removed the heads row at Geiler Park up against Groveport Road. If you recall, we redid that intersection in there with crosswalk. It actually made the line of sight worse, not better. And then we, with the addition, or with the purchase of eight Washington Street as well, we're going to make some additional changes in there, but at this point, that heads row will not go back in its same location.
Really appreciate it. It did improve the site distance there greatly.
For sure.
Somebody mentioned the absolutely right across the street where towing path hits Washington on, as you're coming out towing path, and you hit Washington immediately to your left. Yeah.
Those are, that's private property.
Okay.
On there, so I'm not saying it can't be done, but we got a rule on that. That's a, that's a tough angle.
Okay. Yeah, no, it is. Yeah. Thank you.
Anything for Mr. Peoples? All right. We'll move to Fairfield County Sheriff's Report. Sergeant Strong.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to have last council meeting off. I put a little over 50 hours in three days at the Labor Day Festival. I was pretty cooked, so I took full advantage of that, got to have a nice dinner with my wife, and so, thank you. Other than my monthly stat report, I don't have anything else for you. I guess the reason, I don't have a reason for the speeding tickets, but I do hold my guys to a standard as far as enforcement, but we can't make them.
Sounds like everybody's just complying with the law, is what I heard.
I mean, the, the numbers are still up as far as traffic stops. They're, they're out there. They're, they're hitting it still.
They had someone pull over this morning on my way to work. They're, they're, they're out there doing it.
I don't have anything else. If you have any questions for them.
Any questions for Sergeant Strong? No? Okay. We will move to law director report. Mr. Boggs.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I don't have anything specific to report to council this evening, but I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Anything for Mr. Boggs? Okay. We will move to finance director report, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I don't have anything in addition to my written report this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any, any, any questions for Ms. Jackson? Development director report, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We've been working on a number of agreements related to the canal crossing Phase 2, which is the shop property, the three new industrial buildings. Our intent is to have those on your next meeting agenda, so we'll have CRA agreement, economic development agreement that'll be coming forth at that meeting. Those are three industrial buildings, a 200,000, 300,000, and 400,000 square foot building. They would like to break ground on those yet this year, so we'll be working on those over the next coming meetings. And then we're still working with Kroger. We've got their civil plans in for review now, and building plan should be forthcoming there as well. So their intent is to begin construction on that site as well yet this year. So, a lot of activity. Many of you went to the hard hat tour of the library site last Friday, so that's coming along. It was good to be in that building and, and really see the scale. It's going to be such a great addition for the community. They're still targeting an early January opening of that facility. Other than that, if you have any questions, be happy to answer those.
Mr. Harris, that was a pretty awesome opportunity to get a sneak peek of the library. Thank you and staff for your work on, on helping facilitate that project. It will be a great amenity. I know we were sort of maybe divided on the artistic take of the building, but I think in general, we understood that it is a huge amenity. So, for the buildings you mentioned that would be sort of forthcoming, again, sorry, can you, where were those?
It's on Bixby Road.
On Bixby.
The shop property.
Okay.
So between Bixby and 33, right at the, kind of the triangle there. You will see activity happening there over the next coming weeks as well. The project, the apartment project in the city of Columbus, they'll be doing some roadway improvements to Bixby Road, so you'll see that taking place over the next few weeks, is my understanding. So they have some turn lanes and things they'll be putting in.
And Mr. Harris, is it my understanding that those projects will also contribute to the NCA in the future, that we are working on establishing with Wilcox for the industrial projects?
Not at this time, no.
I thought we'd had, okay, we'll follow up.
Mr. Harris, the, the apartments that are going in there, we had discussed before that they were, they were potentially in the, the land that we needed to do the Bixby overpass. Has that been resolved, or is that still an issue as we look for, for the ODOT to eventually put that overpass in there?
So, ODOT was part of the review of the plans there. They actually did some land swapping with the, the owners of that facility, and so it was accounted for in the plans.
That's good. I know there was...
And then the entrances, where the entrance is going in and where the turn lane will be constructed, that's in the city of Columbus. The roadway is still a Madison Township roadway, and so that was coordinated between ODOT and Franklin County Engineers Office, that if and when an interchange goes in, that entrance will be relocated to the new service access drive, and that road, that entrance would close.
And the shop, the three developments that are going are potentially on the shop property. All of that land to get to that Bixby interchange has already been donated, or will be donated?
It will be donated, so that'll be in the agreements we have.
Okay. So what other pieces do we need to look at or go after, do you know?
In terms of right-of-way acquisition, that would be it on, on this side, on the north side of, of 33.
Okay.
On the south side, there'd be right-of-way acquisition, but I'm not sure. I haven't paid attention to those. One of those parcels in the city of Groveport, and the others in Madison Township.
So I know at one point in time, we had talked about the fact they were in their testing phase for that, and doing samples and things like that. Have we heard anything back on where that ended up?
Of the...
For the overpass?
Yeah, the preliminary, the preliminary engineering and environmental is, is complete.
And it's come back clean enough to proceed at some point?
Yeah, it's just a matter of funding. So, you know, they did the preliminary engineering and the environmental. That is all complete. That's the first step in moving forward. Then they would need to have funds dedicated for right-of-way acquisition and for detailed design, and then they can move into construction.
And I know that Columbus has asked for none of their developments to contribute to that funds category, at least when we had the original conversation, Columbus had done none of that. Did we, as you started to develop this out, and then in conversations with the three new buildings being developed, have they committed any money to this overpass?
They have significant contributions that were in the rezoning ordinance to off-site infrastructure.
Thank you. Could you put that back in my inbox so I can remember what they were exactly?
They're in the agreement, CLC, at the next meeting.
That's even more better. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris.
Any other questions for Mr. Harris this evening? Okay, we'll move to resolutions. First resolution on for this evening is Resolution 25-048. Ms. Pierce, could you read that resolution?
A resolution to authorize the mayor and/or city administrator to accept an easement from Lynch Investment Properties LLC.
Response for this is Ms. Amos.
Motion to adopt res-
Motion to adopt Resolution 25-048.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by the chair. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 25-049. Quick, could you read this ordinance as well, or resolution, sorry, resolution as well?
A resolution to authorize the mayor and/or city administrator to accept an easement from Treff Court Development LTD.
The sponsor for this is Mr. Busker.
I move to adopt Resolution 25-049.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. Moore. Any additional discussion on this? Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to ordinances. We have none on for third reading tonight. We do have a few on for second. So the first is Ordinance 25-022. Ms. Pierce, could you read this as well?
An ordinance to update rental provisions for city facilities.
Thank you. The sponsor's Mr. Moore.
Second reading only.
Thank you. And my apologies, the next one is on for first reading. This is Ordinance 25-023. Ms. Pierce, could you read this one as well?
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Danberg Incorporated for the construction of the East Waterloo Street Storm sewer replacement project and declaring an emergency.
And this is also sponsored by Mr. Moore this evening.
I'd like to request waiver of second and third reading.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend council rules requiring a second and third reading. Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Amos. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
I'm looking at it. I wasn't expecting to go into a vote. Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And motion to adopt Ordinance 25-023 and declare an emergency.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore to adopt Ordinance 25-023, and second by Ms. Amos. Any additional discussion on the ordinance before we vote? Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. We, reminder, do have a committee of the whole Monday, September 29th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. Our regular meetings for October, we will have work session and city council Monday, October 6th, with work session beginning at 6:00, full council at 7:00. Also, Monday, October 20th, at 6:00 p.m. for a work session and full council beginning at 7:00. And then we do have a council connect coming up on Wednesday from 6:30 to 7:30. Ms. Amick and I believe Mr. Busker are on for this month. There's an opportunity, if anybody else would like to attend, one more member from council can be present. And then we'll move on to CW Human Services report. Mr. Shea.
All right. Human Services is gearing up for fall and winter programs. Let's see here. Transportation program did 378 one-week trips, 3,256 miles for August, and they're really enjoying the new minivan. Thank you to everybody who made that possible. Holiday preparations are underway for both Thanksgiving and Christmas to make sure we're ready to support our families during the busy season. And the senior outreach of Smiles for Miles, it's their newest program, has been very well received. They receive phone calls and thank you letters from participants to truly appreciate the visits. In July, we delivered individual pies. In August, we handed out meal kits, and this month, we're delivering apple cider and kitchen hand towels. If anyone knows an elderly parent or friend who could use a little extra cheer, please contact Human Services with their name and address, and we'll be glad to add them to the rotation. Thank you for their continued support.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. City of Icc, Ms. Amick?
Thank you. I have nothing new to report. Our next meeting will be October 29th at 11:30 here in council chambers.
Thank you. CW Jrd, Ms. Amos, and Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore and I have a meeting on Thursday, and as far as I'm concerned, nothing since the last two weeks.
Pretty calm.
Pretty calm.
Okay. Destination Canal Winchester, Mr. Busker.
Thank you. Destination Canal Winchester is partnering with the Canal Winchester Chamber of Commerce. This coming Saturday, we'll have the Farmers Market, as well as the Home and Garden Show from 9:00 to noon there in Stradley Park in the green space behind. Next Sunday, September 28th, is our final Summer Sundays at Stradley. That is from 4:00 to 7:00, and Shuckle Bubba Deluxe will be performing there. And just as a reminder, you can always download our app to stay connected with all these events.
Thank you, sir. CW Chamber of Commerce, Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I have a few events coming up I'd like to highlight. The Home Sweet Home Show is on Saturday, September 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Stradley Place. There will be a dozen, or there will be dozens of vendors and local service providers, as well as giveaways. It's a convenient way to make connections and walk away with resources to move forward with home projects. This is a free event, and it will be next to the Canal Winchester Farmers Market. No registration is needed, just stop on by. Sunrise Social is on Wednesday, September 24th, from 7:30 to 8:30 at the Hampton Inn. This event is free. It includes breakfast. Guest speaker, Speaker Noah Aman with Elite Networks will speak about cybersecurity trends and actionable steps you can take for your business. And then registration is now open for Meet the Candidate Night on Thursday, October 16th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at Brutal. Canal Winchester City Council candidates will be in attendance. This event will also be shared on YouTube. Please register at canalwinchester.com. Lastly, we want to welcome the newest members to the Canal Winchester Chamber of Commerce: Primerica, Dr. Horton, Foundation Consultant Group, Nimbus Smart Solutions, QC Kinetics of Central Ohio, Capital Choice, and Fresh Coat Painters at Canal Winchester. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sustainability Commission update. We have our next meeting coming up on Wednesday, October 1st, 6:00 p.m. I did send council members a note just asking if you had any priorities you would like to share. I've received responses from a few council members, but the commission was interested in knowing maybe what priorities elected officials might have upcoming for them. So if you have any you would like to add to the list, please let me know. They're also working on map, trying to map some things back as well to the community plan. So obviously, we have, we have a couple of newer stars we're trying to align to, so we're off and running. A lot of big ideas from the group. I know Community Cleanup Day, Mr. Shea shared, I know that's, that's been done in the past, and probably an item that wouldn't be hard to execute again in the near future. So I could certainly see us leading that. But that's all I have for an update from the Sustainability Commission. Any items for older new business this evening?
I just, and this is from Mr. Busker as well, I just wanted to pay a compliment to Destination Canal Winchester. If you haven't seen it, there's a beautiful post out there. I think it was just posted today on social media about what it's like to be in Canal Winchester on a fall day. It is absolutely gorgeous. And so send that to your friends and relatives and invite them to come to Canal Winchester just to see what fall's like. It's beautiful.
Thank you. Any other items? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So...
Second.
Third motion. Motion made by Ms. Amick, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Thank you. Time on is 7:37.